All right. And it's seven oh two on Tuesday, July twenty third, twenty twenty four, and we'll be starting the select meeting for the town of Georgetown. And I want to remind everybody that this is being recorded for our YouTube thing. All right. YouTube. Is there any public comment?
And the public comment would be independent of the public hearing, which will start just after that.
Correct. I don't see it. Sorry.
Can I just, can I just give you an update about our next school board meeting? I was just looking at the agenda just for Tyler. It's August fourteenth.
August fourteenth?
At five P M.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. There's that. I think that goes back to you now at this point, right?
Yeah, so the first item on the agenda would be a public hearing on the proposed fee schedule changes that would start at seven. So you've just declare the hearing open and then we'd outline the process we'll follow and folks will get to try and offer thoughts.
Um, it's seven oh three now.
Yes.
We're moving right along. I will, uh, open the public hearing for the fee schedule changes.
And so the plan tonight, folks, is that we're going to go through the suggested changes by topic. So the first area that we'll be seeking comments on the building codes and planning, then we'll move on to cannabis license shellfish right down through. That way we can take back any feedback from the public and keep it synthesized in an orderly way. So with that, is there any comment on the proposed changes to the building codes and planning fees? I will.
I don't see any.
I don't see any.
Bob's on. We've got Andy.
Uh, I will just comment on, um, generally because it's there. That I did go to other neighboring communities and look at their current fee structure. And, um, Georgetown's increases across the board, including here at the building codes and planning, do jump us well above any community nearby. So just as a general comment to start off, because it does also fall that all of the building codes and planning fees are going up by one hundred percent.
It's also worth noting they haven't gone up forever.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just making a general comment. I did not know when but what fee structure was last changed in this town.
Quite a while ago. I don't know off the top of my head.
You know, I've had some. Go ahead, Bronwyn. Bob Trebona, is Bob Trebona here?
Looks like he's online.
On the virtual.
And, and so is Barry.
I understood that the, uh, from Tyler, that the planning board or somebody on the planning board, uh, had looked at these numbers and had a response.
Looks like Terry's.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the planning board met and discussed all of these and they were in agreement that, uh, they didn't see anything wrong with them. Uh, there were some opinions that maybe they were perhaps still a little bit low. As we agreed to accept the, uh, recommendations of the, uh, the board.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I absolutely concur with Bob.
Thank you, Terry.
And can you hear me?
Yes, and that's.
Oh, sorry. Um, I just want to say I had looked at the Harpswell fees and they're substantially higher than our fees, even with the increase. So Harpswell to do, to pull a building permit, was about less, you know, currently there, we are less than half of what it costs to pull, pull a building permit in Harpswell. So I, I think the increase in fees are, are warranted.
Okay, thank you.
I would note for the.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I just, I'm sorry, John. Can I note to the record that, um, in the past year or two, it's been observed by, by staff and members of the planning committee that our costs for issuing these permits um, was significantly higher than what we were charging folks because of the additional time it takes for the code enforcement officer and, and the plumbing inspector, um, to go out and monitor uh, construction in progress. That's, that's all I had to say.
And we did have a chat that was asking who the first person that spoke was. I would just ask that anybody that does speak tonight, state your name and where in Georgetown you're from. And just so you know, Bob, that was Andy from Director.
Also a resident.
Yes.
Yeah.
Speaking as a resident in that case.
I have a question. When Mark Owen and Five Islands, uh, when a new residential permit or any kind of building permits issued for forty cents or twenty cents a square foot, once the house is built, don't we collect good tax money off these homes? It seems kind of.
What I would say is yes, we do collect tax money off of structures, you know, in homes. Once they're built, whether it be a deck, you know, if somebody builds a deck and adds value, that would eventually go into the tax discussion. What I would say is that historically, the code enforcement officer position in Georgetown relative to these fees, the code enforcement officer's salary used to primarily be the fees that came from it. This year, as we have looked to professionalize the role and move in a more cohesive Woolwich or Rousick Georgetown Rowan in the same direction, pay the base salary. And so these fees in the long run could actually help make sure that we're not spending more money in the long run on salaries that, you know, we could recoup. And ultimately, whether it be these fees, whether it be other fees, revenues that come into the town that we didn't previously bring in mean that later on, we would be able to offset taxes potentially or not increase them at the same rate. So if we had extra monies coming in that we didn't previously and the budget stayed the same, taxes would go down. If we had other revenues coming in and the budget still went up, it means that that increase won't go with the same rate. If that kind of makes sense, Mark.
Yeah.
And I see Bob's hand is up.
Yeah, the the intention on this, uh, we didn't start this, but, uh, the fees that were presented are an attempt for the permit applicants to pay for the hours of the code enforcement officer for him to process that permit. It involves research on his part to check out everything. Uh, he has to make, you know, frequently make site visits. It, it's more than just, okay, here's a, an application and passing it on to the planning board. He has to do research and spend time and do field work, et cetera. And it's only appropriate that the applicants pay for his hours on that. There's another portion of this code enforcement officer's job, which doesn't have anything to do with permit applications. And on for that portion, the town should rightly take part of the money, that, that money, uh, from property taxes. So it, it's in, in my mind, it's, you know, an equality thing.
And Terry, do you have something to add?
Yes, uh, speaking, uh, actually extending what Bob said. There are two principles to this. Number one, our code enforcement officer is now shared full time between Woolwich and Rousick in Georgetown. Uh, the, when you look at the, from the F A C point of view, the costs have almost doubled. Uh, they're reasonable. We've been quite below quite the other jurisdictions around us. With that in mind, a doubling of the fee just about covers the current cost of our new C E O situation. Uh, it, I looked at it about three different ways and presented to the planning board and they all came, they all came to about the same conclusion that we needed to about double the fees if permits stayed the same, didn't increase, didn't, uh, decrease. So that's about the best way we can look at it. So our opinion was doubling the fees just about netted a net zero for the costs and the income in that, uh, department.
Thank you, Terry.
Is that all? That all for the building or building stuff?
Okay, so then we would go to page two. I would note that the town did not have any suggested changes to the cannabis license structure. That was a very recent ordinance that was adopted in town. And those fees are relatively in line with similar sized communities of the region. Were there any comments relative to that?
I, I have a question, um, being new obviously to the select board. Do you have a sense, Tyler or John or Bronwyn? How many of these, of the, um, the licenses are, are requested for cannabis operations here?
I believe.
If you had to guess.
I believe we only have one in town.
That's what, that's what I thought. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Thank you. And next up was the Shellfish Committee.
Well, and, um, of course they haven't had meetings this last month, but, um, they were, when they redid their ordinance, they hadn't, uh, didn't have any, uh, they didn't see any need to raise their, raise their thing. So that's why the, um, at least in my view, I don't think they wanted to, um, jump it from what it was originally.
Okay.
So as, as far as on our interim, that was what, if that's what they had when we did that, I think that's along the lines of what they were looking at.
So you're thinking the Shellfish Committee was against the idea of raising fees?
Yes.
So when we eventually get to an adoption, that'll be a board discussion on what direction.
Yeah, unless, I don't see anybody here from it, so.
I'm showing Andy Wereways, I'm showing that there's a, just about fifty percent increase there in that fees for shellfish licensing, except for resident recreational is going up only twenty-five percent and a non-resident recreational is going up one hundred and fourteen plus percent. Am I correct?
I didn't do.
Going up from what? I mean, what?
From the interim fees. On the draft fees.
Yep.
So I think that resident commercial is currently two hundred. The suggestion of office staff was three hundred. You're noting that that's going up by a third on that one. You're looking at resident student commercial went up fifty dollars, again, going up by a third resident commercial similarly, and then down on the recreations, they were less. And that's, I believe, the discussion. I don't want to speak for the town clerk, but she's the one that issues these licenses and typically works with neighboring businesses who also issue them here in town and felt that the recreational side didn't need to go up at the same rate.
Okay.
But it sounds like the Shellfish Committee has some resistance to any increases too. So that'll be a discussion where I get to. Perfect. Any comments from the public on the Shellfish side? None. Then we would be up onto moorings. Any comments from the public?
I have, um, a statement from.
I'm sorry, could, could the person who keeps speaking come interview and use a microphone so that those of us on Zoom can see him? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Wereways. I have a, um, written statement from the president of Director Robin Hood about the mooring fee increases, um, and then have some of my own also. I'll start with John Kanning, the president of Director Robin Hood's written statement. All of us at Robin Hood are proud to be part of the Georgetown community. Those aren't simply empty words. Many Georgetown residents have close connections to our marina, boatyard and restaurant, the Osprey, whether as customers, employees, visitors or owners. Countless local kids have worked our darn silvered summers. Many island residents have made use of our generators, supplied electricity during power outages. Of course, this connection to the community is nothing new. Rickville and Rickstore have been Georgetown landmarks for nearly a hundred fifty years. Of course, people, of course, we're also a business that draws visitors to the island. People who patronize local businesses and add to the life of Georgetown. This is why we are so concerned about the proposed fee hike for rental morgues. A massive increase of over five hundred percent will greatly affect our ability to rent our morgues and to bring visitors to the island. The in fee increase represents almost fifteen percent of our seasonal morgue rate to our customers. And since morgues are expensive to place and maintain yearly and do not have a high profit margin, this would necessitate a large increase in our rate. This would put us well above the competition in Booth Bay and other local communities and would no doubt cause a sharp drop off in morgue customers. While we understand the need for revenue and are not opposed to a reasonable increase based on real criteria and analysis, this seems to be basically a find some money attempt unfairly singing, singling out specific marine businesses. This is ironic, given the marine industry's historic role in the well-being and culture of Georgetown, Bath and Maine as a whole. We ask you to consider the negative effects of this massive fee hike would have on Georgetown and our community. Um, speaking also as a manager at Robin Hood and as a resident, I will back up some of John's comments and add a few of my own. Um, contrary to our Robin Good nickname locally, um, we work hard to keep our rates affordable for our customers. We work hard twice a year to look at our competitors' rates. Um, and now at other towns' mooring fees, um, we do that twice a year. We raise our rates annually. Um, and we try very hard to keep our rates very affordable for the customers. As I said, people do call us Robin Good, but if you look at our rates compared to any of our local competitors, we're, we're usually a fair amount less. And we do that on purpose because we're boaters, most of us in management at Robin Hood. And we really can't afford our boats either. So for a big increase of that amount is very painful and will cost us customers, um, because many of our customers are on the edge of being able to afford their boats. We are good, good neighbors here in Georgetown. We've worked hard to work with the commercial fishing fleet. Whereas the previous owner did not work with them, we work with them by keeping our rates very low for them. We have special rates for them to come and haul out. And we do that regularly. Um, they're, all know they can come to our protected harbor and use one of the moorings during any storm available, which is bubble winter. Um, we have all eighty-two of our moorings available for the local fishing fleet to come and use all at our expense. We check their boats for them during those storms. I'm there twenty-four hours a day often during those storms. So as I say, it's, these increases are pretty painful for us. Um, currently, we pay thirty, three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars in mooring fees annually to the town of Georgetown. This increase would bump us to two, twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. That represents a six hundred and twenty-five percent increase in our fees. As I said earlier, it represents, uh, per morgue, a five hundred and twenty-five percent increase, which would be, um, over two hundred and fifty dollars per morgue to our customers. Uh, George, we, we are good community members, um, donating over twenty-three thousand dollars in the past number of years to various committees, scholarships, the historical society, the island education fund, the volunteer fire department, um, the working league, uh, that doesn't even include some of the gift certificates we give out for the houseboat rentals, so that those uh, lost my wording. Anyway, those entities can auction off those type of things.
Like the fire department.
Yes. So I really hope you all consider the impacts that especially the rental mooring fee will have. As a resident, I have two private moorings. I have no problem paying the extra, what is it, ten dollars a year for my application and fee to keep my two private moorings. But I think the rental mooring fee, which, um, really does seem targeted to us. I believe there's only one or two other entities out there renting moorings. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hey, man. I work in the commercial end of it and thank you for being good to the guys. They all know that they can walk there. Be very loved.
Bronwyn?
I, I have a couple of questions, but, uh, there's a question in the chat. What is the fee to rent a mooring at the marina? And the second question is back to who was speaking. I understand his first name is Andy. Uh, last name, please.
Wereways.
Okay, thank you. My question is, uh, first of all, about who is entitled to rent moorings in town according to the ordinances in effect? Because my understanding is that I can't rent my mooring in front of my house as a private person and I can't sell it or hand it off to somebody else. I can allow somebody to use it, but it's my mooring. So what, what is the criteria for being able to rent out a mooring?
And we do have Woody on as well, who may be able to offer as the harbor master some thoughts.
I wanted to hear from Woody because I wanted to know if he did any comparables, um, and just get his feedback on some of these, uh, issues that we're discussing in that Andy race. Go ahead, Woody, please.
Sure. So, um, so Bronwyn, in, in answer to your question, for you to be able to rent a mooring, you, there's a process you need to go through. Your mooring field needs to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and we, we have it in our ordinance that my mooring is for me. I can't make five hundred bucks, uh, a summer by renting it to Aria so she can put her, uh, her sailboat on the mooring. So, so it, it, to that extent, you're right. If you want to have commercial moorings to rent though, there are a number of hoops you gotta jump through, uh, with the Army Corps to do that. Um, does that pretty much answer your question?
That's the first part of it. And then how many entities in town have jumped through those hoops and have moorings available for rent? And I suppose also, uh, who enforces or oversees that? Is that your job?
I, I guess it, it would be to the extent I'm aware of somebody's renting a mooring. And I've had private people ready moors, a couple of them, and I had to get involved because the wrong boat was on the mooring and was, was making, making problems for a neighbor. I don't go around mooring by mooring, looking at registrations and seeing, you know, who's done what. But in Robin Hood, they really, they take care of, and it saves me a lot of work, frankly. They take care of their moorings. They service them. They know where they are. Um, and, uh, and so they really, they really kind of take care of things to the extent I, I just don't need to be involved over there. I think the only other commercial entity I'm aware of is Five Islands Fuel. They have ten moorings left from the boatyard, what the boatyard originally had before the bankruptcy. They rent those and this summer I think they've probably got six or seven full year, uh, folks on their moorings and they've got another three or four for people that come in, in the evening, that come in on their boat, uh, cruising through, through the harbor and, and pay them for the night or pay them for two nights to rent their moorings. Okay, I'm not sure if there's anybody else.
Okay.
We also have a guest status. So if somebody has a B and B, they can, they can apply to have a guest status so they can have two moorings out front for people who are staying the week and, and want to tie their uh, Boston Whaler up in front of the mooring. Um, I also should add, there are no, nobody else from the harbor committees here, but I guess I should add so that everybody understands, uh, the members of the harbor committee were pretty much uniformly against raising the fees at all. I've taken the position that harbor master is just beyond my, I just think it should be up to the elected selectmen to figure out what the fees would be. But I did go, um, I did look this afternoon just to see locally who's charging what. If, and if people would like, I could run through a few of those if that would be helpful.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, uh, across the way in Pittsburgh, it's twenty-five dollars for a resident, a hundred for a non-resident, and they don't seem to make a rental mooring distinction. So there's nothing more than a hundred dollars there. Booth Base, thirty dollars for a resident, sixty for a non-resident and sixty for a rental. Bristol's twenty-five for a resident, a hundred for a non-resident. Harpswell's fifty for a resident, two fifty for a non-resident, one twenty-five for a rental. St. George is forty for a resident, one fifty for a non-resident and one hundred for a rental. And so it, there, these aren't enough, it's not a big enough sample to draw this conclusion completely, but it seems like, at least in some other jurisdictions, they recognize the local aspect of the commercial folks and put them somewhere between the, the resident and the non-resident, but not more than the, not more than the non-resident.
So at the present ti, at the present time, does Georgetown have a fee for commercial rentals?
Yes, it's for, it's, and Andy should correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty certain we're fifteen and forty for commercial, forty for non-resident.
Correct, Woody.
So commercial is, i- is the equivalent of being able to rent a mooring?
If you're from, if you're not a resident.
No, I'm sorry. I mean, to rent out a mooring. Because in the interim schedule, there was no fee listed.
Right.
Correct.
For commercial or for rentals.
Right. Andy, can you say that fee again, the rental fee, please? Cause I was just looking for it on the schedule.
It's forty.
It's forty. Okay.
The same as the non-resident then?
Right.
Same as non-resident for a commercial. And that's what we pay annually for the moorings at the boatyard. It's the forty dollar fee.
Okay, and could we go back to the question that, uh, I think it was Bob Trebona asked? Um, what is the fee to rent a mooring at the marina? What do you charge someone who wants to rent one of these moorings?
Andy Wereways again, um, we currently charge one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per mooring. We have, uh, two hundred and fifty dollar fee plus labor and materials to service every one of our moorings. Um, that cuts deeply into the minimal profit there. We have dock staff we pay to go out daily to, uh, category, category. Mark, which boats are on which moorings, take a head count and clean the mooring tenants. So, um, as you can see, our profit margin on this courtesy to the general public and to our own customers, um, we're not making much money on them at all. And to tack on another two hundred and fifty dollars per mooring um, is. is pretty much going to make it not worth having the mooring field for us.
In the event that the town were to follow a similar, it sounds like nearby communities, non-residents and rental moorings seem to be in the same ballpark. If it was closer towards a non-resident hundred-dollar side versus two-fifty, does that still make it untenable?
I think an incremental raise to that over a few years, we could present to our customers. But to take it in one big bite would be much too painful for many, many of our customers. And what he said, I believe, most towns are in the sixty, forty to sixty-dollar range currently. So to jump even to a hundred would put us above many of those communities.
I don't have any questions. That was just.
So am I am I correct that the the two-fifty figure, well, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. Can somebody just getting, because I'm the new kid on the block, tell me how we came up with the two-hundred-and-fifty dollar for the?
All of the suggested changes that we had in that document, there was internal discussions here at the office.
Okay.
Truthfully, I wish that other folks had been here tonight that have a little bit more depth in town. I've been here a year, so there's historically, I think, particularly on the resident and non-resident side of things.
Yeah.
We are far out of what the region is, by and large, the cheapest date to dance. On the rental side, I think a discussion with director, I'm glad you're here tonight because this is really good data and feedback to to have as it informs the discussion.
Yeah, and that's where I was, I was just curious about the rental mooring figure, the two-fifty. I have a good sense of where we're where the internal discussion, how we got up to twenty-five and one hundred on the resident and non-resident. So thank you, Tyler.
I think there's been a concern in town among some people, a certain about who gets to rent moorings that goes way back before director became director and before the bankruptcy that that created Five Islands Fuel. And, you know, how did the how did the people who were renting out moorings initially get that privilege when it wasn't available to most of the town? There was, it was, let's just say it wasn't transparent, whatever process was followed in that regard. And not all of the moorings that previously were rented received the maintenance that director apparently is putting into their moorings. That's just a a comment on past perceptions. Moving forward, there's a lot of good information, so.
If I may add just a few comments based on that. The application fee for the Army Corps alone for that mooring field is a laborious and expensive process. And if other people want to go through it, I we welcome competition. It's healthy to have competition. So but to to raise our our fees that much would really make it untenable for us to continue in that rental business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
And thank you for coming.
Were there any other comments from the public on the mooring section before we move on to the town-owned property fees? Seeing none, and just by background on the town-owned property piece, the TOPMB is an elected board, and last year, most of the fees come from committees that are appointed by the select board. The select board and the town-owned property management board worked out a compromise on fees where they worked together to get to a final change. I know that the town office had some suggestions on changes. I know that when the TOPMB met, was it last week or the week before? Last week, that there was a desire not to move in the direction of fee increases. And I would say that at that meeting as well, it was brought out that we didn't, we failed to include the new non-resident commercial user fee. And we were seeking feedback on the special use fees, which we've now gotten. So I just wanted to share that before there were comments that TOPMB is a little bit different than the others because of the way it's worded in the ordinance.
Right. And that's, and you pretty much summed it up right there. Is that, I mean, about like what we talked about in the meeting itself? Um, but you've got a copy of their
Yes.
thing somewhere. You've got, okay, you were able to get that out today?
Yep.
Okay.
Is Tyler, has anyone else seen this? The update on the town-owned property fees?
The town-owned property fees, it's been out to the board. That document was finished up today after I was able to speak to Stephen. And I texted you, Bronwyn, about a change on the copy I gave you earlier today. Because there was a discrepancy on the spreadsheet.
But nobody in the public has seen the the, for instance, the special use fees or the non-resident commercial user fee.
These fees all existed on technically the Schedule A that the town-owned property management board put together with the ordinance. But it wasn't a part of the materials that went out.
With this.
With this.
But it's part, it is part of the ordinance, though, so it is there.
And and the good news, too, and just for the public, members of the board, this is a very new process the town's going through, so by next year, we will have ironed out most of these kinks.
Are you suggesting Bronwyn that? Then that would be the float, right?
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, but we can let Mike ask his question. I was just wondering if you were suggesting that Tyler relate or report out to the public what those fees are since we are not sharing a screen.
And I would be happy to do so.
I was really suggesting that, I mean, actually, the TOPMB agreed to this process on the condition that they still set the fees and we hold the hearing and basically accept their recommendations. Because as Tyler pointed out, they are an elected board and the ordinance creating the TOPMB gives them the power to set the fees, the authority to set the fees. It's worth noting for public consumption that there are some additional, some new fees that are included in this schedule. And I guess were authorized in the amendments that were passed at town meeting to the TOPMB ordinance. And they have to do with with people who are not commercial fishermen but come in and want to use the hoist or other services at the wharf for some limited period of time. It's been going on for a number of years, and and these fees are a very specific attempt to address that. There's a charter boat, a tour boat that comes by most Sunday evenings, uses the commercial floats to discharge passengers who are then invited to eat at the business at the wharf. And they've never been charged anything. Whether they still come, when they know that they have to pay five hundred dollars annually to do that remains to be seen. But that's, it's in response to those issues that these fees were included. So I just think that's worth noting.
Thank you.
And I I don't, I think that as part of the minutes of this meeting, the total fee schedule should should be included.
Absolutely. And what we will do, Bronwyn, as well, is once we get finished with the hearing tonight and the board makes determinations, I'll collate any changes and we'll get something up on the website tomorrow, too. So but definitely included with the minutes. Mike McDermott has his handle. Mike?
Mike McDermott from Five Islands. I just had a, I don't know if, is the rec doc increase being discussed tonight? Or is that a separate?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Well, it's a resident commercial, no. Recreational float skiff, it's recreational float skiff tie-up, hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. That's not an, I don't think that's an increase.
Oh, I thought it was going up to two-fifty.
That's the other.
That was the other.
Well, that's, and and I will say that again, and I tried to clarify at the beginning. Yes, that was a suggestion from the town side, but since these documents went out on the tenth, the TOPMB has met. And and I believe that I I don't think that the select board will be passing that increase tonight.
Well, I'll lower my hand. See ya. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd just like to say on, as far as how it goes down there. When we bought that land from Mod Stussy way back when, there's a stipulation in the whole deed that we make that working waterfront or wholesale and retail seafood. That's, that's what has to happen down there. And so when part of our thinking was is that we're trying to help fishermen and raising any fees for them would be not helpful, especially in this climate, the way it's going. So we kind of look at that as something that's our mission.
And Mark, is that the case for regardless of resident residency here? Resident fishermen, non-resident fishermen, is that the same, is that the?
Well, we really don't have any very many non-resident fishermen. There's a lot of things that have been popping up over the years, like seaweed harvesters.
Right.
And that's harvesting of the ocean. We we support that. But as far as non-residential, there's a fifty-dollar one-time benefit is for like, if Lincoln up in Westport gets a tuna fish, he uses the hoist for fifty dollars. We try and make everybody accountable.
Okay.
But there really aren't non-resident commercial fishermen, so to speak. But we're running into the balmy days was once, what you were talking about, Bronwyn. When we first signed a lease with Keith and Gina, they got that boat to come over. We thought, well, they're paying forty-eight thousand dollars a year. We're going to let the boat come in, try and help them out, get going. Since everything's changed along the waterfront, liability and all the things that go on, now we're starting to, you know, we have charters running out of there all of a sudden. We have charters running in. We have seaweed going out. We have lots of different things, commercials, requests for weddings, all this stuff that we didn't have in the past. So we're trying to keep up with fees and applications, and it's not always, it's not always easy and cut and dry, because a lot of these we've never dealt with before. So we have to ask ourselves, do we want this to be a main Mecca for kayak training in October? If we do, then I guess we better charge them. But if we don't, then we should just say we don't want that. We need to decide that as a town, I think, you know. Just keep in mind that it's got to be for commercial fisheries first. So that that's about it.
That was Mark Donovan for the question in the chat from Chief Whalen. So Mark, does the TOPMB support the the special user fees that are listed here?
The Yeah, they created, they created them.
Okay.
They're coming from them.
Right. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Everything on the new document that went out today came directly from the TOPMB. The one discrepancy, I spoke to the chair of the TOPMB in Montana, and we were able to work that one out.
Okay, thank you.
And any more comments on town-owned property fees? If not, the last fees that were on this schedule were the town office fees. Follow request statute allows up to twenty-five dollars an hour. We've discussed photocopies. People come into the office, like, need to ask you to use the copier. He can pay for costs. And I will say on the notaries, since the adoption of this interim fee schedule a month ago, we've had about forty dollars brought in in revenue on notaries.
Correct.
And I can say that is good money coming in that we're pulled away from a desk and doing something else.
That's a bargain.
It helps.
Honestly, that's a bargain.
So we
So is that the end of the?
I'd ask if anyone else had comments on this. And then what could happen is the adoption or suggestions of changes is under new business later? Or is it new business or old business? Under old business, but we could take that out of order while we have the public here that's interested. But that's up to the board once we declare the hearing closed.
Is there any any more comment on the hearing?
If I could just, I do understand that the various committees and the select board and the administration in the office are trying to keep the mill rate as low as possible. I just thank you for your consideration as far as the rental mooring fees go, and I do appreciate the efforts and understand the the purpose of the fee increases now. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anything else on the world of the web? I don't see anything, so I guess at seven forty-seven, we can declare, we have to declare or vote just, you can just declare. I'll declare the heating, meeting, or hearing closed.
So if, so now it's a decision of the board if we wanted to take the old business item out of order while the public's here, or we could go back to the regular agenda and get there.
I'd like to go back to the regular agenda myself. But that's just one opinion. And Aria has a motion.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll second your motion.
So we actually can withdraw that if we're going right back to the agenda. We don't need one.
Okay, great.
We're golden. So now that we're back, the public hearing is done forty-three minute, forty-four minutes later. Thank you, everyone. Were there any items to be added to the agenda by members of the board tonight now that we're forty-eight minutes in?
I have none.
No.
All right.
None.
The only thing that I would note is that we will be tabling the finance director update tonight. And the next item of business would be the minutes of the July ninth meeting for review and approval. There were some minor tweaks that went out today, and we added one more addition since I gave you the copy, Bronwyn, noting that Gary Pankey is now the vice chair of the rec committee as well.
Yeah, actually, he remains the vice chair. He always was the vice chair.
Right.
Okay, but just to be on the record in case somebody's questioning that. And I move to approve those minutes.
Second.
All jabber.
All right.
I.
Agree on zero. There were no items in your packet for review. Under assessing items, I just want to let you know that Bill Van Tynen and Pat Dow will be come soon beginning their pickup work ahead of commitment in the fall. Bill Van Tynen also is working to schedule a meeting with myself and Pam Gunnel to go over some concerns that she had raised. And Pat Dow will be in the office next Monday to start going over the game plan on tackling new builds and so on. Your correspondence in your packet, we are very excited that we have gotten provisional acceptance on our working waterfront resiliency grant from the state. We yesterday actually heard from all kinds of folks congratulating us, and I said, let's put it on state letterhead without the word preliminary, and then we'll pop the champagne.
Right.
You also in your packet had the Department of Labor's, what they're calling the main links. I included this. They're really job resources should a constituent reach out and ask for assistance. This used to be the e-blast, but the state has decided to rename them. There was also a bulletin, an email update from Saginaw County EMA Director Phil Davis. And I just wanted to make the board aware that FEMA is in the process of changing rules whereby in the future for public assistance on storms, you'll have to, if a site is in the flood plain, it would have to be raised up to two feet. That doesn't affect this storm, and Phil Davis and I are going to be getting together to talk more about what that means. But he wanted to keep us in the loop that FEMA is looking at more resiliency down the road. Additionally, the town of Arausik has hired a new administrator, Ms. Burgess. They were in the look. I just wanted to keep the board aware that there were some changes, one island up from us. I also included in the packet the communication that we had to all committee, commission, and board chairs and liaisons regarding the fee schedule tonight. Some committees weren't present, but every committee was reached out to, and I just wanted to make sure that was noted. Additionally, in your packet, there was a notice from Alex, the town clerk, regarding FOA training. If you are a newly appointed officer or recently elected or a selectman who might have meant to take it last year but hasn't turned in the form yet, please get that to Alex soon. And I appreciate you, John, for letting me mention that. And I would also note that the Midcoast Council of Governments had a director's report. There's a lot of good data really going over what that organization does. I think with our discussions we've had about I think with our discussions we've had about MCAG hours, it's good to know what services are available to us as well. Kennebec Estuary Land Trust is in the process of accreditation. And they had sent along a notice if anyone on the board, members of the public conservation commission wanted to send some public comment about the good work they do, the information is in that letter. And lastly, I included Georgetown Yoga, the recreation committee sponsors it, and there were some new upcoming dates. Were there any questions on that mountain of correspondence? And if not, I can tell you there was no other correspondence. We are good on continuing items tonight and that would get us into committee updates in your packet under the attachment. Various minutes, there were recreation committee minutes from May and June, as well as TOP MB minutes. And we had no membership items on the agenda tonight. And now I will stop talking so the liaisons can give an update.
Um, I think we went over most of what I did in the town of property, where it was, a lot of it was on the
Tonight stuff.
Tonight stuff. Uh, I don't think I had anything else. I haven't had anything else since the last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, the, um, solid waste committee would like to be able to advertise a, a part-time position. Gary Pankey has stepped back from working his regular seven hours a week. And they're concerned, he's, he's available as a substitute, uh, but he's not anxious. Uh, he's busy elsewhere. And this leaves them in a very tight situation should anyone wish to take vacation in the wonderful Maine summer, um, or need sick leave or personal leave, um, family leave of any kind. And, um, because Gary is not working his regular one day a week, that money is available, um, in the budget, within the budget, uh, to be hiring. So they're just looking for approval to advertise.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second that.
All right.
And I'm in favor.
Look at that.
I think they, they should all be able to take vacation.
I agree.
But, but it should still run. We don't want it to not run.
I would like, I, I would like to note that, um, speaking as a resident, um, but now as a select board person, I'd like to have us talk in the future as an agenda item. You know, as a resident, when you show up there on Easter and they're all working and everything else is closed for Easter, that seems unfair to me that we would have them working on some of the holidays and keeping them away from celebrations that they may otherwise have, even if we had a reduced schedule. Um, I realize solid waste, we don't have Dave here, but we do have Allison here. Um, but anyway, that, that is something that I'd like us to just kick around if we could, please. John, we talked about that a little bit and I do know that people expect the transfer station to be open when it's supposed to be open. But I also think, you know, from a decency point of view, we, we ought to give some flexibility for them to be able to enjoy the holidays that we all enjoy.
Well, there have been changes in recent years. At, at one time, uh, the statement was that it, it was open Wednesdays, Saturdays, Sunday and holiday Mondays.
Right.
And I don't know if there just became, came too many holiday Mondays. But they, it's recently been select holiday Mondays. And they publish, the, the committee discusses that and, and decides which Mondays to be open.
Right.
Um, early in the year and then try to, to get that word out. Uh, so I think it would also make sense. And then there are, eh, exceptions are sometimes, sometimes made for, uh, when Christmas falls, you know, Christmas Eve or Christmas Day uh, falls on a, a weekend day that it would normally be open. So it's, it's appropriate to discuss that is really what, what I would say. But.
I've, I've made a note of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And just for what it's worth, we also in the tax bills that went out this year did share a good calendar that notes which all those holiday Mondays are. Just in case anyone still has that letter and we've got copies here at the office, if folks want to take them for their calendar. Were there, eh, did you have any updates?
I, I do. I just need to check the date. So, um, you've noted and thank you for including that Tyler. Um, the, the, the rec committee is offering yoga at the school gym on the first and third Sundays. And so we've got the flyer. So thank you for including that. And, and, uh, that would be one thing. And then of course this, uh, Frolic Frolic and the art show is September fourteenth, uh, sponsored by the rec committee and the Friends of Reed State Park. So that's from ten to two and all residents, um, can attend for free. And then, uh, the Seguinland Institute, um, which is some of our neighbors and residents, uh, Phil and Philip Francis and Marcia Dunn and the whole Francis crew are doing a book lecture at the Seguinland Institute on August fifteenth. So please check that out, um, if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Were there any board member updates independent of your role on a committee that you wanted to share relative to town business or otherwise?
Nothing off the top of my head. All right.
No, thank you.
Thank you. So I would jump into a very quick town administrator update. I wanted to let the board know that we have received the warrant from the Saginaw, Saginaw County Commissioners, letting us know that we owe them one million, two hundred sixty-four dollars, two hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars. We get this every year in July. It's something that we tackle after commitment and you know, it's coming up, but I will be, it came in the mail yesterday. I'll get everyone a copy to review, but it'll be on a future agenda. And I wanted to also note that the Maine Municipal Association has an executive committee election this year and they've requested that the town take part by ballot. I would note that there were no opposed seats. So everybody that's running will be elected to the executive committee, but MMA has emailed not once, not twice, but thrice ahead of their deadline to get folks to participate. There are two options. The board could either everyone vote, come in and sign, or the board could vote to designate me to submit the ballot for you. In the event everyone wants to sign, we can get that on the next agenda, which is still ahead of their deadline. So I just wanted to flag that. Additionally, the bathroom at town office is not really open to the public, but right now it is definitely closed to the public. We had an incident yesterday where one staff member got stuck in there when the handle broke. So it is now temporarily fixed, but we do not want Tyler to get stuck in there again, or better yet, a member of the public. And if you want to see the tape, Alex has got me embarrassed. Next week on the thirtieth at three thirty PM, we will be having a stakeholder meeting for all of the facilities that were involved in the energy audit. We have folks coming from the school. We've got folks coming from the community center. We also have fire department representation planned and town office. And these discussions really are going to identify some of the areas identified in the audit that we could potentially seek future grant money on ahead of our reauthorization in that program. And while we talk about energy audits, we're going to have a community presentation at Georgetown Historical Society on the twentieth of August. And you can either attend in person or Zoom. I can get you details, but our energy auditor will actually be coming down and talk about the findings of those reports and any answering questions that are had. In regards to election day security, there have been a lot of talks amongst town managers, administrators and clerks around the state about the heightened level of discourse right now and whether or not a police presence, sheriff presence and so on should be looked at. I know places like Madison. I know places locally are looking. I know Alex is having some discussions locally, but I just wanted to keep folks in the loop that at some point in the event that they feel they need to reach out to the sheriff, we'll be in touch and work on that. But we want to make sure everyone feels safe voting. And the last thing I just wanted to note, because I can, six years ago today, Al Roker was in Georgetown at Saginaw Bay campground. I was there and eight years ago today, we celebrated our tricentennial down at the Wharf. And I was also there. So I just wanted to share that. And if there were no questions for my update, we've tabled the finance director's update and I would turn this over to the code enforcement officer for an update.
Tyler, Tyler.
Oh, well, yes.
Well, it seems to me that it, since there are no opposed offices on the executive committee of MMA, that it would, it would be expedient to move that the board authorize you to vote, uh, to cast a single vote for the board in favor of those people who are running.
I'd second that. Yep.
And that's moved and seconded?
All in favor.
Thank you. I like expediency. Thank you, Bronwyn. And now I'm looking to make sure, were there any other questions or motions? And seeing none, welcome up, Mike.
Thank you, Tyler. Good evening. Um, Mike Field, code enforcement. So, um, since our last, uh, discussion regarding the campground in town, I met with the owner, uh, on the site of the property and we walked the entire property and well, not the entire property, but showed me where the, where the tent sites and the bathroom site was. Um, there are eight active campsites, uh, that are very well spaced, uh, between each other. Uh, the, uh, owner owns just shy of twenty acres of property there. Three were within, uh, seventy-five feet of a wetland or a stream. Uh, he was told, advised that he needed to move those and he agreed and, uh, actually was sending me pictures, uh, texting me pictures last week of, of the removal. Um, he showed me the bathroom tent. It does contain a porta potty that you would see in a, in a boat or in a camper, a wheel in small and low to the ground. It doesn't, it, there was no evidence of, you know, smell or anything that would lead me to believe that it's being abused or, or um, using it dumped right there on, on the site, et cetera. He's, he indicated that he uses an RV dumping station, but he also indicated that he uses the septic system on site of his home. Uh, cause he's not currently living, living on the site, uh, living at, living at that property. And he does, and they, there's no water. Campers are, uh, required to bring their own water, uh, to drink and so forth at the campground. Uh, there was no campers while I was there. Uh, it says it's been a slow year. He had one coming in that particular day. Um, so after our, our visit, I explained, uh, the issues that we had and that, uh, he needed to, uh, get a state license and a permit, state license first, uh, application process. And then he would also need, uh, a permit from the town through the planning board. I sent him those state links that he needed to, to use and, and showed him what the planning board process was and where all those things were. Um, so like I said, he had sent me several pictures of what he's doing. He, and he actually sent me a picture today or yesterday of this, of a check to pay to the order for, uh, to the state for the application process. Um, so that's where I'm at today. I, from, if it's okay, I do have a little bit of a comment after an opinion if that's appropriate.
Love to hear it.
Okay. Uh, you know, he is, I do believe he is a caretaker of land, you know, there's a lot of, uh, agriculture being grown there and, and being taken care of. Uh, he was very cooperative, no issues in that regard. Uh, um, I don't, so my thought is I, we recommend them to continue to get licensed with the state and permitted through the town as long as everything goes accordingly. And, um, and if you agree with that, I'll continue to closely monitor that situation and see where we go from here.
Yes, he seems very motivated to, he's jumped right onto this process and giving you the blow by blow along the way. So.
Yes, I'm agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. And the last of our updates tonight is the fire chief update. And I saw Chief Waylon in the comments earlier. There is Brian.
Yeah. Hi guys. Thanks for, uh, having me tonight. Just, uh, update from the fire department, uh, just going over a couple of things. Um, just wanted to give you a heads up on, uh, the things we got going on. So, uh, in terms of, uh, personnel, we've got, uh, kind of a, yeah, started a pretty, uh, position that started, uh, up in July. And, uh, so we got, uh, one member working on, uh, on Fridays, uh, pretty much during the day, like an eight to four. I mean, hours are a little flexible, but generally there during the day, doing our ambulance checks, fire department checks, uh, apparatus checks on the trucks. Uh, making sure everything is where it should be. Everything is right, exactly how it needs to be all the time. Uh, which is a huge help for, for myself personally and, and the department as a whole to make sure that, uh, you know, things are exactly where they should be, how they should be all the time. Um, making sure we have no expired equipment on ambulances, things like that. So, um, that's been a great help and, uh, I think it's going really well. And when he's, uh, not doing the checks, um, we're making sure that, you know, ma- station maintenance is getting done, ongoing projects, you know, things that, uh, you know, aren't, are difficult to do, but take time. And, uh, when he's not doing those things, he's ready to respond, um, for any calls to come in during that time. So, uh, that's been a great, great help and a ready addition for us. And, uh, yeah, it's been going really well. So, uh, that's for, for personnel, for calls. We've had a pretty busy year overall. Um, and, uh, we're ramping real hard in the summer. So we're about, uh, a little ahead of our average for this time of the year, uh, for call volume wise, but, um, we seem to be handling most of them pretty well. We've had, uh, a bunch of calls in the last week or so. We had three on Sunday in a, during the day, which is, uh, highly unusual for us. We don't usually do that many in such a short period of time, but, uh, we were able to handle them almost entirely on our own. Um, did have to call for some, uh, mutually for help from, uh, some local agencies, MC one, Bath Rescue, that kind of thing. So, um, you know, the coverage available personnel for these calls was a little thin. But, uh, like, uh, so I mentioned earlier, it's summer in Maine. Everybody wants to take the vacation, take the time off and, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's prerogative. So they, uh, you know, we, we go out with the personnel we have available. And, uh, if it's two people sometimes, then that's what we had available. So, um, but we, our guys, uh, we handled it and, uh, got the job done. So real proud of them for that. Um, let's see, it's vehicles, um, nothing major right now, just routine maintenance. Uh, making sure everything's, uh, just how it should be, all ship shape. So, uh, nothing major coming up. And, uh, for, uh, uh, ongoing projects that we've got going on right now, I am working with, uh, the Indian Point Association to, uh, possibly look into, uh, an additional water source for the fire department use, uh, down on Indian Point. Um, so in the event we have a, an incident, a fire down there, we'll have access to, uh, to some water that we can, uh, take for that incident. So, uh, like I said, working with them, it's an ongoing process. Um, but, uh, we have a active discussion going on back and forth and trying to find, uh, a situation that will work for everybody. Um, and kind of along the same lines, I'm also working with, uh, Robin and Marina over there, uh, for a very similar project to, uh, add in a dry hydrant over at the Marina. Again, if there, heaven forbid, was an incident down there or even on that end of town, uh, we'd have another water source available to us. So, um, yeah, so we're working on those projects, kind of a ongoing things. And, uh, yeah, those are some projects for, um, oh, another project we have right now is, uh, we received, uh, as a department in the town, um, fifteen thousand dollars in EMS stabilization funds from the state. And, uh, uh, which is going to be a huge help for us. So, uh, you know, we're gonna use those funds for, uh, some equipment purchases that, uh, will be quite advantageous for us in the long term. Uh, right now we're still evaluating what equipment exactly we're going to purchase with that money. Um, but, um, it's going to make, basically make our jobs easier is what it all comes down to. Um, you know, simpler, easier, uh, more efficient, that kind of thing. Um, a couple of things that we can upgrade, excuse me, for equipment and a couple of new things that will again, make things easier for us. Um, a couple of pieces of capital equipment, um, a couple of new stair chairs, um, splinting equipment. Um, so spare parts for cardiac monitors, things like that, things that, um, you know, heaven forbid, something accidentally gets covered, a pair of scissors, which can happen. Um, we'll have a, a spare ready to roll. So, um, we're looking into things like that. And, uh, should, we actually have to have this project wrapped up by the end of the year. So we're, uh, moving full steam ahead on that. I'm doing some research, find out what's going to be the, you know, best options for us and, uh, going forward with that. So. That's what I got for an update for you guys. Uh, do you guys have any questions for me?
Not right off the top of my head.
No, just wanted to commend you and the department for the excellent job on the open house on July seventh. It was fun. It was fun to, uh, see some of the new equipment.
Yeah, thanks for that. It was, uh, it was nice to have everybody and we're, we're really, I, I'm excited to do it every year. So looking forward to next year already. So thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, actually I do have a quick question for you guys while we're on the fire department stuff. Um, can you guys give us an update if you're able to, um, on the new communications tower? Is there anything moving forward on that? Are we still kind of where we were before?
What I would say right now, Brian, is that I can't give you much.
We're continuing, we're continuing to work on it here.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So it's ongoing process.
We're trying to move the ball forward, so to speak.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And so with that, we're now back to old business and the item that we have is an adoption of a revised fee schedule. What I think would make sense is go through like we just. What I think would make sense is go through like we just did for the hearings, get consensus and then adopt at the end for a final vote. And so the first item.
You mean a single, a single vote on all of the fees?
A final adoption of it, yes, but I think.
Or section by section.
I would go through section by section first and have discussions and see, you know, where we get through that.
I have no issues with the building codes and planning as presented.
Are we good with building?
Neither do I. Is that they were wrong. Happy with that. So that one's easy.
I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay.
I have no issues with cannabis.
Licenses.
I know. I have no issues with cannabis either, but the licenses, yeah. No issues with that fee structure.
All right. The next one up was shellfish.
Shellfish, the interim one that we did originally, or the way it was originally in there as we, before the town. Before you guys played with it. Just because, I mean, they, they weren't, their meetings weren't able, you know, didn't have meetings between then and now, and they hadn't changed it for the ordinance, for the new ordinances. So, I mean, it's.
So I'm sorry, but I'm confused now. Are we saying, is the paper I'm looking at, and I'm not sure it's the right one. No, it's probably not.
So what John is thinking, Bronwyn, is that shellfish license commercial, the town office had suggested it go up to 300. John is suggesting we keep it at 200. The student commercial, the town office had suggested 150. John is suggesting we keep it at the existing 100. Non-resident commercial is currently 400. John would like to keep it there. The non-resident student commercial, we'd like, or John would like to keep at 200. And the recreational licenses would stay the same as last year as well. $20 for resident recreational, non-resident recreational being 35, and a non-resident seven-day recreational at 25. And I believe what you're thinking, John, is that this shellfish committee would have a chance to meet over the course of the next year if they.
Right, to address any of the, any of that stuff. This is just at a bad time for that committee because they're all, this is a busy time for them.
They're all out fishing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem deferring this for them to look at. Makes sense that they would do that. So.
So it's the interim, the fees of the, on the interim fee schedule.
Yes, correct.
That will be operative for shellfish.
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, so then we get to moorings. And before we get to that discussion, I just want to say that I really appreciate the insight that was brought tonight from a professional side of, you know, the running of business on that end, which the town office. We had a good discussion item and I think it brought out good data tonight that we're all a little bit better informed. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to state that. The initial. The initial application fee is currently $50. The town office had suggested $100. The resident fee is currently $15. The town office had suggested 25. The non-resident fee is currently 40. The town office is suggesting 100. And rental mooring should have been on this initial fee schedule at $40. The town office was suggesting 250.
Well, my thought is to, to increase the non-resident fee to $100 and make the rental mooring fee the same. 100. That's, that's my thinking presently.
On that stuff, could we step that up slowly? Start it a little bit lower and work our way up to that, where they were just jumping this all up at once and they're halfway through their season right now and stuff. So they can, so we can work it in over a period of time.
So what does that mean? What would that mean?
I've, somewhere, somewhere under that, but over the.
60, 70?
I mean, it's just, it's, you know, rather than.
Where do we feel about the initial application fee? Because I think that, I think that increase is probably gonna.
The proposed increase is, is.
Well, you only pay that, you only pay that once. And then annually, you pay.
Right.
25 bucks. So. So I don't have any, yeah. I don't have any problem with $100 as an initial fee.
How do you feel about that, John?
What, what's involved in that? Is there much legwork for anybody to do for when they're doing that?
I know.
Alex, right?
I'm just curious.
Alex and Woody are very involved in that. You know, typically the process starts out with Woody. Is it even an option? Can you work through it? His staff time that he bills goes to that as well was on Alex's side. I'm not saying that we should be just raising a fee to cover the cost, but there is time invested in that.
And, and.
There's a significant number of phone calls related to that.
I, I agree. I don't, I don't think that's that initial application fee.
I don't think it's exorbitant, that's all. It just seems quite reasonable.
I, I agree. And if it's not been raised in some time, everything else, including Alex's time spent on it as well as Woody's, I think it makes sense to go ahead and raise that.
Look, I, I just, that's, I was just curious what more or whatever's involved with that. So I can see that one, all right.
Yeah, I mean, it also is supposed to involve Woody's determination that the mooring they intend to put in is adequate for the boat they intend to put on it.
So it sounds like we all agree to raise that to the office suggested rate of 100.
All right. In terms of the resident fee going from 15 to 25, where is the board's consensus on the additional $10 a year?
That doesn't seem outrageous. And I know they've been trying to do a bunch of satellites, GPS.
GPS mapping.
Yeah, I know they've been trying to do a bunch of that and that's very time consuming and stuff. I, I'm okay with the 25. 10 bucks doesn't seem like that much.
Once again, it seems pretty damn reasonable for what you have to pay anyplace else. The, the board has been asking for years for a map of all the moorings. And there's, there are programs out there that Woody says are quite expensive. So they have been trying to figure out a cheaper way to get a real accurate thing. I don't know if that's ultimately going to be possible. But the $25 is nominal. Anybody who owns a boat had better have 25 they can kick in for the mooring.
Sounds like we agree on 25.
Okay.
So the non, the non-resident fee then, would that go down to, to 60 or 70 along with the rental? Is that, is that our thought?
If, if the idea is to have the two costs be the same, then that would be our thought. If we're saying, if we're gonna do like other.
Did the, did the non-resident not go up between the draft and the interim?
The non-resident was $40 and we're now looking at 100. So if you split the difference at 70, that, you know, would be going up, recognizing costs have changed in the last 20 years. Also recognizing that I think there is an argument to be made about steps and not going too soon, too fast.
It's also possible that we should consider the number of rental moorings that any, that any given business is offering. There's. I, I don't know that that, if that makes sense or not. I just was noticing that the campground, for instance, the permit fees are in tiers. Tier one is X number of 10 to 25 or something. And then as the number of campsites go up, the, I don't know if the fee goes up or just the tier goes up. But, and I, I, this is an embryo. It's not a finished thought. It's just a, something that's crossed my mind is, should we consider that?
I think. I think the maintenance on the, on the moorings is a little more than having to do the stuff down there at the campground, because they're gonna dive almost every, is it every year or like every other year, a couple of years?
Every year.
That's pretty, hell, you got so much current up in that one. They're always just spinning around in circles.
Our insurance.
Yep.
So, so it's clear we're, we're all rejecting the 250 on the rental moorings. I guess one thing that I'd like to, to determine is are we going to try to be consistent with the non-resident fee and do a, and, and have that at a different level than the rental? Or try to have the two be the same fee? Do you have a feeling about that, John?
I don't know if they correlate. I, I just.
Is there any correlation that you can think of? Bronwyn, Tyler, John?
Not really. I mean, a non-resident mooring is, the question is how many of them do you really want to have? Is the harbor full and there are more people and more residents who would like to have a mooring?
We know five islands is full because there's a waiting list.
And, and I could also see that if we paired them this year, because that seems to be the regional approach.
Right.
That we can punt this back to the harbor committee who can really have these discussions as the resident experts on, you know, do we think those should be together and bring us back a recommendation for next year?
Yeah. I mean, Woody was pretty clear that he wants to have a little bit of distance from that, but there, I, I think they'd be perfectly willing to give us recommendations. So perhaps for this year.
There may be further research to do.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm also still a little bit uncertain of how you qualify to rent out a mooring. I mean, the, Marina's been doing it for years. And the Five Islands Fuel inherited their moorings that were rental moorings. So do we require, do we require that the Army Corps place the moorings? Do we require annual maintenance? And do we, is there an application process so that we would know if anybody decides to rent moorings or wants to? That, those are still very gray areas in my understanding.
I don't know how, how, how the harbor committee polices that.
Oh, they don't police any, John.
If it's, if it's, if you list it as a rental, the, the Army Corps, you've got to go through them before you can even list it as a rental. I'm, I'm asking Andy Ware Rice, because he's the one who was talking about it. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking if you know from your experience.
It, it's been a few years since I've read our Army Corps permitting in depth. But yes, my, my belief is to have a mooring field of any substance, the Army Corps has to approve it. And mostly that is in the realm of the commercial end of things. Or private moorings. There is no, no need for that. It falls under the waterways and harbor ordinances of the community.
Okay.
So, so I would, I would propose that we do pair them together. That we come up with a number, what will be the non-resident and what will be the rent rental. And I'm going to suggest that's, you know, either 60 or 70. And, and then we schedule a workshop with Woody and the harbor committee and get some data that will be helpful to us to make a better informed decision and invite, you know, other members of the public who are stakeholders in this discussion.
Absolutely.
That works for me. I'm okay with that.
I heard two numbers. Which one are we thinking?
I'd go with 60.
I'll second that.
All right. So consensus, just so we're all on the same page, the initial application would be $100. And I do want to note just for folks here that in the event that John has a mooring and John doesn't pay it on time and John's mooring expires, John would then have to pay that application fee again. So I just want to make sure that sometimes there are folks in town that have had to pay the application fee more than once, largely on that end.
John hasn't uncovered his boat in five years, so that's a moot point.
And I have no sailboat. Thank you, Woody, for trying to give me one, but.
And the resident fee would be going up from 15 to 25.
Right.
And resident or non-resident and rental moorings would both be going up from 40 to 60.
Correct.
And with the expectation that in, not the immediate future, but in the near future, we get stakeholders together to have a very good discussion.
Yes. I mean, there were reasons, I assume, that Alex and whoever else arrived at some of those figures. And I'd like to hear more from them as well and try to make, you know, the best informed decision we can based on all, all of those factors.
Yes. And so when we get to the town-owned property on the schedule that says draft, the proposed town office changes, I would recommend we draw a big X through that and the document that I shared today, which are the existing fees from the TOPMB per their Schedule A referenced in their ordinance, be incorporated.
That's, I'm all for that.
And then lastly, the town office FOA requests, photocopies and notary, I would keep the same. They're very new and already making us money.
Yep.
Yes, and I'd like to look at that again next, next year.
Perfect.
Because I don't think that's, I actually don't think those are high enough for, for the time that it takes, having, you know, having that same lived experience that, that y'all do, getting interrupted. So.
So what my plan will be after the board makes a motion to adopt, I will get these changes collated into a new document tomorrow, share them with the board, and then we'll get them to the website after I hear back from everybody that, yes, we're all on the same page.
I move to adopt the fee schedule as we have just reported out on.
I'll second it.
Second.
Well, okay.
Either way.
Thank you, everyone. I certainly learned a lot of new things tonight, too. And now moving into new business, the first item was the cancellation of the August 13th Select Board Meeting and a possible rescheduling of said meeting.
Well, I'm not going to go to the Primus show because I'm taking a long weekend that next week and I didn't realize that. So I don't have to worry about missing Primus.
So I do know that I believe Aria is away for a conference that week. I have an early morning in Oxford County. Don't mind driving the next morning and I'll be gone for a few days. I did look at other dates. I would say that if we moved the August 13th meeting to August 6th, that does give us a couple of weeks between this meeting and that meeting and also would give us a couple of weeks between that meeting and the one at the end. Should anything come up, this is a particularly outside of these things slower time of the year. So just for what that's worth.
You know, yeah, and I, I'll be in Chicago and I, I think I'll be, you know, in a meeting at the time that we would start this in a dinner meeting. So I, I absolutely can't do the August date and I apologize for that. But if you want to go forward without me, but I, otherwise I do like the idea of the 6th and the 13th.
The 6th was fine for me.
Okay.
Are you available the 6th, Bronwyn? Hello?
If you're speaking, we can't hear you, Bronwyn.
Hello?
Yeah.
She fell asleep.
No, I see she's there.
She's there, I think it's.
So it'd be the 6th and the 27th.
The 6th and the 27th, okay. No problem. I just. Okay, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to be on speakerphone and finish it that way if you cannot.
Thank you. You too. See you guys. Thank you.
She's trying to figure it out. Okay, we'll let you go then. She said the 6th is fine with her, but she's, she is still trying to figure it out.
Perfect. And the 6th would be. Perfect, and the sixth would be the only one we'd have to change, the twenty-seventh is already in the books.
Right.
When you make, is that something we have to make a motion on, or are we good?
Well, let's, oh yeah, she did, she did say the sixth would work for her, so um. I'd move to.
Reschedule?
To reschedule the uh, August thirteenth to the August sixth date that we're proposing. I think the only other committee that it meets is uh, Rec Committee, and they meet at six, but-
Right.
So it won't be a problem.
Okay, I'll second that.
And.
John seconded, I think for this one, I think we could proceed, and then we'll hang tight for a minute.
Right.
For the, so all in favor, I see two to zero and one abstention.
What?
Oh, we hear you now, Bronwyn.
There you go, alright.
I didn't abstain.
I, we couldn't hear you.
We couldn't hear you or see you.
Well, I was raising my hand.
Your light is all black.
We can't see you.
I can see the, the sky, what's left of the sky, that's all I can see right now.
Sorry, hang on, I'll turn on a light.
Look at that, it was not an abstention, my apologies.
Jumped the gun.
And while Bronwyn is doing that, the, the next item, and I just wanna note, we received from the community center a note right now that the community center would like to ask that CMP reinstall a streetlight that they previously had, a pole has been changed. I suggested they get this into us before we have our streetlight discussion, and they have, so, that one's easy.
Can we just swap out lights?
Did they just take it down when they replaced the, the pole, or?
Yeah, the old pole's still in place, the new one's there, they may, it's laying in the bushes. I, I, I'm guessing they're gonna put it back up, but I just wanted to-
And, and my thought is that after we make a decision in a moment, I'll be in touch with CMP tomorrow anyway, likely, so. So now that we can see Bronwyn, hello, hello, the next item would be a determination on moving the Robin Hood Road streetlight. In your packet, there was a map that was provided by CMP, the light that Ms. Reese has talked about is located at pole one. In talking with CMP, as we've discussed previously, this light is higher than the wattage for residential areas, it is unshielded, and really does not illuminate that corner. In looking at possible alternatives, we did discuss with the road commissioner, the need for having a light at that corner, particularly for public safety during plowing season. Pole three with shielding with lower wattage would alleviate much of the concerns of Ms. Reese, while also creating more visibility on the actual corner. So in the long run, it would, I think, be the pole that that light probably should have been on to begin with, but after a month of looking into it, that is the best answer I can come up with.
Mm-hmm, I will agree with that.
It's pole one down near the road.
Uh, pole one is-
Just before the intersection itself.
Right here, and pole three would shine onto it, and with the shielding, the one concern that could come up is that there is a homeowner behind that light, but there are trees there, and with the shielding, CMP is confident that they can make it a minimal impact, and would definitely alleviate the concerns of light shining directly into someone's house, almost twice what the wattage should be for a residential area.
Has the other homeowner been made aware of?
Yeah.
We have been down in the area, we have not had a chance to speak directly to that homeowner, I did knock on the door when I was there.
I will inform.
It's not skipper, it's the one in between skipper and there, people up on the hill, they're up in behind there.
Agus Powers' old home?
Uh, maybe?
Yeah, okay.
And that, and that house is back up awful ways anyway from the-
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. No, they're, they're, they're not in residence often, and the houses look set much further than that.
Yep.
And it will alleviate the concern of Ms. Reese, were that light really seeing it laying on it?
Yeah.
Yep.
I just wanted to share for the record that we understand it too, so thank you, Mr. Ware Rice. On terms of that, do us, the board wanna make a motion to move the pole, or to direct me to talk to CMP?
Move the light to the pole anyway?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, don't move the pole, move the light, reduce the wattage, and shield it.
Second.
Alright.
All in favor?
They had new poles last year?
Thank you. Nice.
I'm sorry, but public comment is over.
And I can see that on the packet, that would complete the new business, there were no items for signature, and there is an executive session scheduled, but there, if there's any-
Is there any public comment before we're done, before we do go into, do you guys have anything? Any public comment out there in the world?
Hang on, I just saw something, but, nope.
Nope.
I don't see any.
They're dropping like flies here.
Okay. So then, um, no public comment, we're gonna move into executive session?
Yep.
Um.
We have to move that, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, see ya.
I'd move, uh, pursuant to seven MRS, or one MRS, section four oh five, six C, that we move into executive session.
Alright, at eight thirty-seven.
Thank you, and I'm gonna hit.
And now we just get to?
Move to adjourn.
I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thanks, Bronwyn, take care.